...our meeting of the Glasgow City Council. And the first thing we want to do is to place to our pledge. You're joining?
I pledge allegiance to the law and am not a slave to it. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, we'll begin our meeting with prayer. To Heavenly Father, who stand before you tonight as uncles servants, uncles servants who are charged with a monumental task, a monumental task to lead our community, to lead the citizens of our community in making laws, in making decisions, in making things run better in this community. We ask, Lord, that you watch over each and every member who is fortunate to sit on this council body, that you will help guide them in making their decisions that will tend to the greater good of this community and will be made with your principles in mind in making this community the best that it possibly can be. We bless the hands that are here tonight to make these decisions, and we ask that you watch over us and guide us. In Jesus's name, amen. We will be seated. Now, we will ask our interim city clerk, Ms. Mona Simmons, our city clerk, is off today, her mother's due today. And I want to ask April Russell to call the roll.
But now?
Present.
Library?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Ready.
Burris?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Trey?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
All right, we've got a full house, and we appreciate all of the folks joining us here tonight. We, again, as I was saying in the prayer, it's very important what we do here, and really appreciate the public interest in what's going on here. The next thing we need to do is we need to approve our agenda. Back on Thursday, our council members received in their email the agenda for tonight's meeting, and they've had a chance to look over it, and I will entertain a motion that we approve the agenda so we can conduct business tonight as a matter of attending to that agenda. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor of proceeding with the proposed agenda indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. And the agenda has been approved for tonight, so we will move to that agenda as we conduct business. And the first item of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which, believe it or not, sounds like a long time ago, was on December the 23rd. I'll entertain a motion, if you all have had a chance to look over the minutes, entertain a motion that we approve those and put them into the record.
Motion.
Okay, Councilman Deals, are you second?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes as they were presented to you from the last meeting? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, white sign? All right, the minutes are now in the record book. This is always a fun part of what we do up here. I'm going to ask Glasgow Police Chief Guy Howey to come to the podium, and we're going to introduce a gentleman who is going to be involved in a promotion here tonight. Chief Howey?
Thank you, sir and councilman.
Jeff Childers, would you come forward?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Jeff Childers. He grew up in high school, Kentucky, graduated from Barron County High School. He attended, from there, he attended Western Kentucky University, where he received his bachelor's degree in sociology and criminology. Sergeant Childers began his career with the Glasgow Police Department in 2018. He went to the Kansas City Police Department and has returned to us. In December, we did a promotion process for the position of sergeant, and Sergeant Childers shined, and he is being promoted to the rank of sergeant tonight. And his mother, Mrs. Brown, will be putting his badge on after you issuing of the ballot.
All right, well, here is me. Jeff, let me make an official with him, because I know you want, this is a proud moment for all of us, for sure. I know that Chief Howey has really been good in his tenure to drag on his officers and to promote their promotion, so I get the pleasure of swearing you in in this promotion. Okay, we'll ask you to raise your right hand, and I'm going to read this particular paper of office for you, okay? "I, Jeffrey Childers, a citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my abilities the duties of police sergeant for the city of Glasgow, and that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Kentucky." So, how do you agree with that statement?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Yes, sir.
Lot of pressure, you know, so that's why I'm referring to the state.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, all the time we've been doing this, nobody ever practices.
Six years ago, you stayed in the end. I still. All right, congratulations, Sergeant.
I'm going to give you a shout. Congratulations right here. We want to make it official, in case you have to go to work before you leave.
I worked on it. I'd already made it.
He didn't got the right, he wrote the word sergeant up there. That's good. Did he spell it right? I approve the review. Chief, I'll leave, I'll give those for you, and you can take them to the right people, okay?
Take them to you. Congratulations, ma'am. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Good job, ma'am.
It's always very exciting to see these promotions and to see the people that we have working here at the city of Glasgow excel in whatever their job happens to be. This is an example of it tonight. We are going to continue right now with the, some presentations. I want to do a better job this year of letting everybody know what the people who work for the city of Glasgow are getting done on a regular basis. So, I have asked the three of our department heads to stand up and just give us a minute or two of some of the latest things going on in their departments. We have lots of bragging to do, and first of all, I'll just call Chief Howey back up here. You were number one on the list, sir, so give us some good news.
That's not always the best.
And Chief, you put that mic in front of you.
It talks back to.
Okay.
Well, since you know, we began upgrading the police department and doing some remodeling in the spring. We have completed that recently with the new furniture for the detective area, new carpet and new flooring and new painting, so the building's looking really, really good, and I encourage anybody to stop by and we'll be happy to show you. It's been a work in progress, but we got it done. Secondly, our personnel, several months ago, this council approved the additional positions of two officers. Those two officers are just about ready to be hired, and they're both in their final stages of their background, so they'll be coming on board here in the next few weeks, and then that will fill out our sworn positions that we have. As you know, Tanya Berwick retired after 27 years with the city, and her position's been filled and shall be started today, her first day. Additionally, all the vehicles that were in the, in this current budget are in and have been issued out, and we have four vehicles that will be traded back in, so we're up with that. Also additionally, our Flock cameras that were in the budget have all been installed, are up and running, and already one of the new cameras has recovered stolen vehicle from Tennessee, I believe, on the back of a record, so we're moving forward and moving along.
Thank you very much. And I don't know whether these, we had a lot of ranking officers here from your department tonight. I'm sure they were here to see Sergeant Childers sworn in, or maybe they wanted to double-check what you were going to say about him, but.
No, they were here for Childers.
Okay. We always enjoy seeing our officers here in the council, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, council. Thank you.
And we're going to call our fire chief, Lucas Tinsley, up. Fire department's been very, very busy, and this is the time of the year to take it. A lot of calls, things of that nature, but Chief Tinsley, I want to hear a little about what you all have been doing.
Committee and council? All right, a couple of things have been going on with fire department. Our new air packs have arrived. They are on trucks and in use. Our guys have already put them into use, fighting a couple of house fires, and they seem to be really happy with how they're performing, so that's really good. Those air packs were purchased through FEMA grant. We have just completed testing for three open positions at the fire department. We should be filling those positions toward the end of the month, so we're excited about that. Four firefighters have just returned from Wisconsin on a pre-conference build of a tower truck that we have on order. They were at the factory going through all the specs, making sure that what they're going to be building is what best fits Glasgow, and we'll be looking for a return trip around August for final inspection on that piece of equipment. We'd like to conduct it, new and veteran council, by the station any time, just so you can get a good idea of what's going on in the fire department.
Thank you. All right, Chief, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you. You all got some, some folks who've been really busy, but there's been some, I guess I want to say, there's been some fires that could have been a lot worse. You all didn't know what you were doing and didn't have the equipment to deal with.
I have an excellent crew, and they do an excellent job.
And if we watch the news out of California, we know how things can go wrong, and how not even having the right equipment, things can go bad, but I applaud you and want everybody to keep, keep dealing with it.
Thank you, sir. I ask you to keep those guys in your prayers as well. I actually have families from Washington State that are traveling to California currently to help with those fires.
Hopefully that it will be safe and they can accomplish some things. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, and Beverly Harson. Beverly is our director of the Barron Metcalf E-911 Center, and she's always got a very challenging operation over there, and she does a great job at it, and I think you all need to hear what she's been up to.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you guys know or not, but every Friday morning, we have a department head supervise the meeting. I call those our pep rallies, no offense, Mayor.
It's okay.
We share our.
We'll do the cheering after that.
Correct. We share our wins and our losses, and I just like to say always, folks back here, I can call on me and those guys and yells, and they're here to help me as much as they can. And I hope you all know that we're ready to help you all. I really enjoy those meetings. We learn a lot from those meetings, what's going on. With that being said, last week, myself along with Papal Dunbar, we met with the new 911 director, Robert Edmonton. We had lunch, went really well, so we're hoping we can gain some spirit there. It's all sounding great for us. Also, last week, I had a former employee that approached me wanting to come back to work, which is a win for us because we are shorthanded. I have three open positions as of today, so she will be coming back part-time as soon as we get all the paperwork done, which is awesome because she's trained, she's certified, and she knows what she's doing, so, and we could use that help. So that's pretty awesome. We are in the process of working on a new furniture project at the center. We're going to do a little bit of remodeling with new furniture, new setup, so that's pretty exciting. It is going to take a lot to do because we have to keep everything up and running while we're doing this, so if you all want to come and help, just let me know. I'll pitch with you in it. But we did get a grant this year, got a new recording system that April Dunbar worked on really well. We got that completed, it was about $30,000, so that's going really well for us. I'd like to encourage each and every one of you to come by and see us and, and watch us work, or watch the dispatchers do what they do each and every day. I have a really awesome team, and they would love for you all to come by and see them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Beverly. I appreciate your reporting. Such a tough job over there, and you know, the stat, the turnover, it's just, it's just the nature of the business where they are always looking for some good people, so be sure and share that news with, with everybody that Beverly is looking for, some people that could be, be a part of a really good team over there. I appreciate these first three comments. I just want to hear a little bit from our different departments, so you all know kind of what's involved and what's been going great for the city. If bad things happen, we'll talk about that too. It's just a chance to kind of be honest about that, so thank each one of you for being here. We need to, well, let me back up here, one more thing. We can't not talk about the departments that were in the low-down, hold-down showdown, lip sync battle.
You were close.
The Glasgow Department of Public Works and the Glasgow Department of Parks and Recreation competed against each other in one of the funniest events that I've ever been to, and we are working on, maybe trying to get a, an encore presentation here in the council room of some of these folks before too long, so as you can see that. But I really, I really, we were really put on a good show, I tell you. I was proud of it, you never want to. Okay, that's enough department news. Now let's go to our new business, Rich. We've got an ordinance to consider, sir.
This is one of the rezoning of property located at 110 Positions Boulevard in Glasgow. It contains 2.59 acres, and the request is from Popee, which is Office and Professional District to a B3 Highway Service Business District classification. The owner and applicant Kentucky Industrial Alliance LLC has requested a zoning change for the property as described above, from the OP to the B3 classification. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as exhibit A and incorporated here in our residence. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on December 16th of last year, hooked by the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from OP to B3 classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council and are adopted by the council and are attached to this ordinance as exhibit B. Now therefore, be hereby ordered by the city as follows. Section 1, findings and recommendations of the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached as exhibit B are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located at 110 Positions Boulevard containing 2.59 acres is rezoned from OP to B3 classification. The real property covered by this ordinance be more particularly described in exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, if you have heard the, first of all, this is a first reading of an ordinance that requires two readings to become law. If you have heard the first reading of this particular ordinance, and at this point, I will entertain a motion that we approve the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, councilman Dees. Now with a motion and a second, we'll get it up on the floor. Is there a discussion about this proposed resolution, or the trip?
I would add you, Mayor, for some.
Okay, all right. The Positions Boulevard, that is located, it's kind of, we call it across from the hospital. Yes, and this is a, and if you, when you read this, this, this has to do with, Kevin, where is it?
The block.
Okay, that's the one where Dr. Wilson talked about.
Yeah, yeah. Located along 31D there, just past intersection of Happy Valley Road, just down the left, just past Lexington Drive.
It's way off the road.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure where it is. Okay, so we now have, we talked about the location, we've had discussion, any further discussion about it? All right, all in favor of passing the first reading of this ordinance, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? White sign? Okay, it carries. Okay, we have more new business, Rich?
Mayor, this is a thought of a sponsor of a council member, Terry Mabell, and it is a resolution naming the City Hall Building in honor of former Mayor Luska J. Twymon. That whereas Luska J. Twymon was born in high school, Kentucky, graduated from Kentucky State University, and later serving on the university's Board of Regents. And whereas for many years, Luska J. Twymon served as the principal of Ralph J. Buck's School in Glasgow, and played an integral role in his merger with Glasgow High School to achieve liberation. And whereas Luska J. Twymon was also serving as mayor of the city of Glasgow from 1968 to 1985, and was the first African-American elected to a full term as mayor of a city in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And whereas Luska J. Twymon was also the first African-American Kentuckian to serve on the U.S. Commission of Agriculture, and further served on the Kentucky Advisory Committee of the U.S. Commission on Human Rights. And whereas Luska J. Twymon served in the United States Army during World War II in the Philippines from 1942 to 1946, and whereas the city of Glasgow wishes to recognize the historic legacy of Luska J. Twymon by naming the city's City Hall Building in his honor. Now therefore, be hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow, Kentucky, that the city's City Hall Building located at 126 East Public Square be named the Luska J. Twymon Municipal Building, and that the city take all necessary action to acquire and install the appropriate signage and plaque for saying, so ordered by the city council of Glasgow this 13th day of January 2025.
All right, you have heard the reading, the first reading of the resolution. I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion, Ben.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Library.
Okay, all right, a motion and a second. Now, what about discussion? You want to make any discussion about this?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Norris, and I appreciate everyone coming out tonight for us to pay honor and respect to Mayor Twymon. As me know, and the audience, and those that are familiar with Mayor Twymon, his legacy that he's left for the city of Glasgow, not only the city of Glasgow, but the Commonwealth of Kentucky and our nation as a whole. I'm fortunate to know Mayor Twymon is for a short period of my life, and I can say that my interactions with him was a man that showed integrity and a steady thinker. He was someone that cared about his community in multiple ways. Mayor Twymon was a man who believed in putting the best effort, and he put the best effort of the community in. By naming the city hall, it's a great respect and honor for him. It's great respect for this community as a whole to recognize him and his accomplishments. You know, in our tagline for our city that we did several years ago, we said heritage with opportunity. And I truly believe that by having Mayor Twymon's name affixed to this building is about heritage and opportunity. And I think that we as a body here recognize his accomplishments. He was heavily involved in education, but he was more involved in city government, and that was something that he lived, to make sure that Glasgow was the right city to be, and he gave it all that he could to make it a place to live. I want to end my comments tonight with a quote from former Mayor Twymon, and he said this, he said, "So I try to do the best for the most people. That's all I can do." And I think that's very worthy of his legacy, and for that tonight, we respect and recognize him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this resolution indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? White sign? And the resolution carries. Thank you very much. We have several, well, let me just say it this way. Okay, that's right, we, a lot of folks I know came tonight specifically to hear about the resolution honoring Mayor Twymon and the renovation of this building, but if you all don't want to stay for the rest of the council, you're more than welcome to leave, or you can hang around with us. We're going to appoint a lot of people to committees tonight, so you're welcome to.
Mayor Norris.
Before.
We do that. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say anything in regard to Mayor Twymon? Anybody that would like to say a comment or two? We would welcome your thoughts and anything. William, I'm looking at you.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and I, well, they not many times went down to Rosewood Road and used it in the house with Luska and Glaz, and sometimes she, you know, when they had some of a light moment, sometimes she would call him Curly Top, but I always thought it was funny because he didn't have any hair on top of his head. But I do think it's, it's an honor. I do think that he would be so pleased, and during the time that he was mayor, I don't believe everybody realizes how tumultuous times were during the 60s, but he kept everything, I think Reagan's time, but he kept everything sort of smooth and calm, and, and he always wanted people to work together, and so that was the thing that I admired about him was that, as, as he quote saying, he wanted to work for all people, not just one group, one sect, one religion. He wanted what was blessed for all people, and I think wherever he went in, in the state and in the nation, really, he carried that message from Glasgow. And so, I, I really appreciate it, being a Twymon and assisting back here, you know. There's not as many Twymons around as there used to be. They've also moved away, and they're in different places doing different things, but I do appreciate it, and I'm from high school also, so I know what, what that means, and so I appreciate it from each and every one of you. Thank you.
My memory goes back to his words at the beginning of the meetings in the 80s, and often he would pray a scripture, and that just me goes along with the character of the man who was forgotten.
Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything, but I would be, I would be, I'd love if somebody could take this chance to reminisce about the early seasons, and a lot of this transpired. There were a lot of us that are in this room right now, and I'm looking out and making a laugh, and for my first and second grade, we were at the Seminole Gaze School at Ralph Lynch, where he was the president. And for this building to be named after him, considering what was going on in '65, '66, '67, and '68, and for us second here, because it was difficult for us to either approach this area in a town, let alone thought that in my lifetime, there might be a building named after Mr. Twymon. And I think the results of the people that are here and the results of actions that we took as students of his was based on one of his philosophies about, you know, there is nothing you can't do, it's, it's a matter of what you want to do. And so I'm looking out and I'm seeing the Twymons, the. And so I'm looking out and I'm seeing the Twimans, the Rambles, and everybody else, that we all went to school down at Ralph Punch, the Mills, well, you know, for the sports side of the house, I think a lot of you guys can remember, Glasgow wasn't even on the map, basketball wise, until there was integration and then within a couple of years, we won state championship, and I, you know, so those things all occurred with Mr. Twiman, kind of after him, and I'll hit a sensitive note, a lot of the time when he was the mayor, there was concern, because we lost a large portion of the African-American community to what we would call today just gentrification or something like it, a whole loss. And it was a goal of his is to try to open it up so that we wouldn't have always restricted it to an area that was limited by the large ditch on the Broadway. So he helped hopefully break those down, because, well, the first thing he did was he covered that ditch up. So if you're handy, have access supposedly across that area. So a lot of those sort of things, I think for the ones that lived in Glasgow, I'm looking at Mr. Mills, he can roll a lab, we know the significant changes that were introduced that contributed to our, being here to this community as well, being in the states, while being in the country.
Very good. Thank you all very much. I would just throw in that he was my principal in the sixth grade, and he was a man who gave you guidance, even if that guidance included using that paddle, which he was good. Hadn't outlawed that back then. So with the comments made, I'm going to call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like, so we already voted, but I'm, you know, let's just make, that's making it solid.
Good time, that's a good time.
Okay, now, as I was, as I was saying, we have a, at the beginning of the year, election year, we have a few changes in the complexion of the council, and we are going to be going through several appointments. We, the city of Glasgow is, you know, is a mayor council form of government, and we operate with a lot of committees, and we've got a number of appointments, because of the fact that we're at the end of last year, beginning this year, we're going to go through the motion of getting our committees aligned for this year. And Rich, if you want to get us started on that, please, sir?
First is a municipal order, appointing council members Neal and Freddie, James Neal and Freddie Norris to the Annexation Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with their terms of office. This municipal order is adopted today's date.
All right, you've heard the appointment, is there a motion to accept the appointment?
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the appointment is confirmed.
Next item is appointing Terry Vanelle to the Marion County Economic Authority Board of Directors, appointment to run concurrent with her term of office.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve that appointment.
Motion, Lawrence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of appointing, this should actually be a reappointment, for council member Vanelle to the Marion County Economic Authority, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the appointment carries.
Next item is appointing council members Elizabeth Schumaker and Monica Patrick to the Community Relief Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with their terms of office.
All right, you've heard the municipal order to make them the appointment, these two ladies two are community relief, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
From councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment carries.
Next item appoints Chastity Lowry to the Glasgow Electoral Complaint Board Board of Directors, appointment to run concurrent with her term of office.
Okay, Chastity Lowry has municipal order is to reappoint her to the Electoral Complaint Board, entertain a motion that we approve that.
Motion, Vanelle.
Second?
Second.
Okay, from councilman Neal, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Lowry is reappointed.
Next item appoints Terry Vanelle, Chastity Lowry, Freddie Norris, and James Neal to the City Council Finance Committee, their appointment to run concurrent with their term of office.
All right, you've heard the municipal order to put these folks on the Finance Committee, I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion, Schumaker.
All right, is there a second? Actually, if you, actually, you're going to record as motion, no, no. Is there a second?
I recognize.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all right, is there a discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Next item appoints Terry Vanelle to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board of Directors, the appointment to run concurrent with his term of office.
All right, we have the opposed appointment of councilmember Vanelle, I'll entertain a motion that we move forward with that.
Motion.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment carries.
Next item appoints Chastity Lowry to the Glasgow Marion County Animal Control Board, the term to run concurrent, the appointment rather, to run concurrent with her twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six term of office.
All right, we have a motion considered to, to put councilmember Lowry on the Animal Control Board, I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Motion, Lawrence.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? The appointment carries.
Next item appoints Monica Patrick to the Glasgow Marion County Salvation Army Service Unit Committee. This appointment runs concurrent with her twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six term of office.
All right, you've heard the municipal order, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, Ms. Kirkpatrick, to the Salvation Army Service Unit.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the order carries.
Next item appoints Joe Trigg, Monica Patrick, Freddie Norris, and Randy Wilkinson to the City Council Infrastructure Committee. This appointment runs concurrent with their twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six terms in office.
All right, you've heard the municipal order, I'll entertain a motion that we approve these folks to serve us on the Infrastructure Committee.
Motion, Vanelle.
Second, Lowry.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the order carries.
Next item appoints Chastity Lowry and Elizabeth Schumaker to the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment runs concurrent with their twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six term of office.
You've heard the motion, the, the order rather, to approve these folks to serve on the Plaza Committee, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Lawrence.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order is approved.
Next item appoints Terry Vanelle, Tommy Burris, Chastity Lowry, and Freddie Norris to the City Council Planning Development Committee, also known as the Parks and Recreation Committee. This appointment runs concurrent with their twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six term of office.
You've heard the municipal order, read, and I will now entertain a motion that we approve that order.
Motion.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion and the municipal order rather passes.
Next item appoints Tommy Burris, James Neal, Freddie Norris, and Elizabeth Schumaker to the City Council Public Safety Committee, again, running concurrent with their term of office.
Okay, you've heard the municipal order to appoint these folks to serve on the Public Safety Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve them.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Neal, all right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the municipal order carries.
Next item appoints Monica Patrick to the Renaissance Steering Committee, the appointment to run concurrent with her term of office.
Okay, you have heard the municipal order to reappoint Monica Patrick to the Renaissance Steering Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve them.
Motion, Vanelle.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item appoints Terry Vanelle, Monica Patrick, James Neal, and Joe Trigg to the City Council Strategic Planning Committee for their terms of office for this year.
Okay, we have another important committee right here with several folks that have been entered in the municipal order, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the order.
Motion, Lawrence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, which means we can now discuss it, is there any discussion on these appointments to the Strategic Planning Committee? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? And the order passes.
Next item appoints Joe Trigg and Freddie Norris to the Veterans Wall of Honor Standing Committee for their term of office for this particular year.
Motion, Lowry.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Neal, any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item appoints Monica Patrick to the Water and Sewer Commission, appointment concurrent with her term for this year.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve that particular order.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item appoints Randy Wilkinson to the nine-one-one Governing Board for his, for his term of office for this year.
Okay, we have a municipal order to appoint Randy Wilkinson to the nine-one-one Governing Board, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Lawrence.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? And the order passes.
Next item appoints James Neal to the Intertain Glasgow Committee for his term of office this year.
All right, we have an order to put Mr. Neal back on the committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve that.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next item, we appoints Holly Alexander to serve on the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall be a one-year term expiring January thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, this is reappointing Ms. Alexander to the Plaza Board, I'll entertain a motion that we do that.
Motion, Vanelle.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item appoints Jessica Wells, or reappoint her rather, to serve on the Plaza Theater Advisory Board for a one-year term expiring January thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, we have an order to put Ms. Wells on the Plaza or continue her service, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion rather? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, we appoint Cody Meade to serve on the Plaza Theater Advisory Board for one year expiring January thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
All right, we have an order to put Cody Meade back on the Advisory Board, I'll entertain a motion that we do so.
Motion. Second, Lowry.
Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes, and...
Next item, we appoint Jerry Austin to the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This is a two-year term expiring January thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, you heard the order to put Mr. Austin back on there, and I'll entertain a motion that we continue him.
Motion, Vanelle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Thank you very much. That is a clean sweep, and you understand, I'll say this much, this is really important, these appointments, a lot of them that are members of the council, that is, as Rich so capably said, lasts until their, their term on the office is over. But the people that serve on these commissions and committees spend a whole lot of time getting started and getting to the point that we can function as a city. Ms. Kirkpatrick was here this morning at eight AM for the first meeting, and here she is tonight at whatever time it is, still trying to ramp up business. And I would say the same thing for everybody that has been appointed to one of these committees, is that I have never seen an organization like the city of Glasgow, where people who agree to serve on the committee actually serve, actually show up, actually listen to what citizens are curious to want to discuss, and then make it happen. So I really, even though it takes a little while to get everybody appointed and reappointed, it is so important that we have good people who are dealing with this on a regular basis. So I really, really, really appreciate that. Appreciate how easy it was to talk to these folks wanting to serve and be reappointed. Uh, let's see, I believe that we've got an executive order right here, don't we?
That, that's just for the council's information.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, well, let's see some other announcements right here, help me April, we've got Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on the twentieth, and the offices here at the City Hall will be closed, along with the Department of Public Works, Sanitation, Transit, Stormwater, and Mayfield Hall will be closed. However, the Glasgow Transit Authority will be operating on Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. You want to say anything else about that?
Yeah, it is an amended schedule. It starts at eight fifteen AM to three fifty-five PM, and it'll run the regular schedule from that time.
Okay, so we want people to be able to get to where they need to be, so the transit is going to be operating. We also want to remind you that on the, the garbage that will be picked up on Monday will be collected on Tuesday, have it out early so that everyone, what we call Double Garbage Day, and want to be sure that they have plenty of time to do that. Also, one of my favorite things on Monday, First Baptist Church is hosting a Martin Luther King Junior Day. There's going to be a march to begin on West Washington Street, starting in twelve noon, we will make our way down to First Baptist Church, and we will thoroughly enjoy that celebration on the twentieth day of March. Next, the council meeting is on January the twenty-seventh. I believe we have, have we covered all of the mileage we needed to cover here tonight?
Excuse me, ma'am, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Only part about the executive orders for the police department.
Yes.
I, I, I read through it a couple of times, I didn't see a, a comment about the use of the cameras during operations. We talked about it before, Chief, could you ever?
I'm sorry, sir.
There, you know, where you have your cameras on to record what's going on, I didn't see that in that SOP. Was it in there, or did I miss?
No, sir, this is just changing the use of pepper spray. We're downgrading it to an ocular irritant. We have a separate policy for body worn cameras.
Did you get that certified, Jim?
Yeah.
All right, Phil, that all of that business taken care of and completed, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Tommy, thank you, sir. Tommy, ready to get out of here. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for being here, we love having you.
The noises, what's going on?
We look forward to having a good year here.
Tell them hold on.
We're happy to see you.